Hello, citizens of Walker County. It is my privilege and obligation to once again express my vote that the Confederate monument from Walker County Courthouse grounds be removed. It is true that there are two sides to this conversation, but do not be fooled into thinking that both sides are equally imperatorious. We have heard the argument that the Confederacy's temples are innocent because the Confederacy was innocent and that they bear federal racial overtones which one might take offense today because slavery was never a central motivation for secession. I was appalled when I heard claimed in the last court session that the Confederates were in fact noble patriots of the mold of George Washington defending their homes from a tyrannical invading force then imposing their political will upon a wild banner of Southern populace. Let us allow the actual words of the Texas government to illustrate exactly which outrageous ideology those tyrannical Yankees were trying to force upon the meek and gentle souls of the South. The Texas Declaration of Secession crafted in February eighteen sixty-one by one hundred and seventy-four delegates who across the state lays out many precise reasons to the Texas's secession movement proclaiming quotes in all the non-slavery holdings meetings people that formed themselves into a great sectional party based upon an unnatural feeling of hostility to these Southern states and their system of bad slavery proclaiming the debasing doctrine of equality of all men irrespective of race or color. They demand the abolition of Negro slavery throughout Confederacy and the recognition of political equality between the white and Negro races. We hold as undeniable truths that the governments of the various states of the Confederacy itself were established exclusively by the white race for themselves and their posterity that the African race had no agency in their establishment, that they were rightfully held and regarded as inferior and dependent races and in that condition only, but their existence in this country remained official or tolerable. The destruction of existing relations between the two races is aggravated by our central enemies and the great desolation of one of fifteen slaveholding states and world. These are the sentiments that truly echo from this and all Confederate monuments although it appears that some ears are better able to ignore those echoes than others. I do not believe that my points in this debate are bad people, but they are prone to infusing antiviral evidence and community and family war of actual historical effect. This brings me to another argument we have heard which is that removing this monument will rewrite history. It is clearly obvious that if anything removing this monument would unrewrite history. Abraham Lincoln's conciliatory plan of Reconstruction allowed the South to rebuild its degree of dignity and grace, but it also left the door open for efforts to rewrite the narrative of the war between states, removing the South's roleability and painting its equal as victims and heroes of the total loss of the public. This is of course a religionist fantasy and worst of all it comes at the ongoing extent of paying itself to the true victims, African slaves and their descendants. It is a matter of record that this monument was erected by the United Daughters of the Confederacy in nineteen fifty-six as a way to rally community resistance against desegregation, not as a means of immorning local veterans of the past war and no amount of historical misogyny is going to alter that. The truth is there were two civil war conflicts that took place in Huntsville, both involving the walls prison unit. The first in December eighteen sixty-three stemmed from the demoralized Second Texas Cavalry Regiment attacking prison officials and seizing cloth goods for their own use. The second conflict which took place soon after the war reached end arose when returning Confederate veterans laid siege to the walls unit for six weeks and ultimately failed attempts to raid the cloth factory within. In both of these instances, the aggressors were Texas's own Confederate soldiers attempting to prey upon Walker County's local populace. Are these the Confederate patriots to which this monument were purposed? This also ignores the two thousand Texans who had immoral fighters under the Union. Where is their monument? We erect memorials to all the ancestors regardless of the righteousness of their cause despite what the United Daughters of Confederacy and the Taliban and ISIS would have believed. A willingness to die for one's beliefs does not grant those beliefs righteousness. In closing, I urge you to let us finally cauterize this whole room and let us also acknowledge the real pain felt by our fellow citizens who are colored with every gait upon this symbol of Confederacy, this symbol of their enslavement over the past sixty-four years. We are a better county and a better society today and nothing would make me cruder in Walker County than to decisively remove this unhappiness from this monument as a thing belonging or appropriate to a period other than that which exists for the courthouse grounds with all due haste. Thank you for your time.
Hello, room. My name is Alexis Garcia. I'm here today in support of the removal of this proposal for Confederate monument. More importantly, I also request the removal to be placed on the agenda for the next Commissioners' meeting. Despite, I would just like to clarify about what is considered as a slave war in the words of the Confederacy's Vice President Alexander Stephens. In his clarison speech in eighteen sixty-one, he stated, and I quote, "The Constitution rested upon the equality of races." This was an error. Our new government is founded upon exactly the opposite idea. His clarison rests upon the great truth that the Negro is not equal to the white man, that slavery's subordination to the superior race is his natural and normal condition." End quote. This public space is defiled by a statue honoring those who took up arms against their own country, who did so to perpetuate slavery. To declare, those for anything else is a mess. It is not a coincidence that this monument was erected in nineteen fifty-six during the Civil Rights Movement to reestablish white supremacy and terrorize black communities. If this statue is a homage to anything, it's a print. It sentimentizes people who actively fought to be served as a symbol of slavery and dismisses the victims of that question and their pain in history. It is time to stop glorifying traitors. I would also like to point out that it has absolutely no historical relevance other than the leaders of the Civil War. Instead, it bollocks states in the memory of our Confederate patriots. By definition, there is no such thing as a Confederate patriot. If you continue to dismiss this, it demonstrates that we would honor traitors to the United States of America before respecting African Americans. I ask you, is that message you want to send to the Black community of Huntsville? Confederates gave us nothing but treason and war, all on the surface of white supremacy and African American suffocation. They deserved nothing but our eternal scorn. I close with this. Make these statues a pieces of honor to depict our heroes and our values. Abert racism is not a principle we honor, not in God's sovereign law, not in the law. Let's be on the right side of history this time around.
Commissioners, my name is Kathleen Williams and I spoke to you at the last Commissioners' Court regarding the removal of the Confederate memorial on Walker County Courthouse grounds. I'm sixteen years old and I'm a junior at Huntsville High School. I started an online petition calling for the removal of the memorial. Within twenty-four hours of putting it up, it had received over one thousand signatures. Now it has over four thousand signatures. This discussion has been covered by multiple news stations including the Huntsville Item, KBTX, and Houston Public Radio. Since this issue has reached so many people, U.S. leaders in our local government should be actively seeking a solution. This monument does not represent our community today and instead is a reminder of the growths and injustices perpetrated against Black Americans in our country and in our county. I would like to read an excerpt from an article written by Sam Houston, state university student, and professor Jeffrey Liladon that details some of these injustices in Walker County. I have a copy of this article for you to look at and also a copy of my petition that I'll give you after I finish speaking. The article says, "Former slave owners and resentful whites targeted the newly freed many women in the county because they made easy victims. They were close by and well-known. They had no means to protect themselves and they could be exploited, beaten, or even killed without serious consequences." One example of racial violence took place on the very day that emancipation was announced in Huntsville. Andrew Adams, a formerly enslaved man who witnessed the event remembered that formerly enslaved people were plung thick on the city square, hollering and shouting because they were freed. But he said, "That monument did not last long as there was a white man who came down through that bunch of people on a horse and rode by a formerly enslaved woman, sidled over his saddle, and cut that woman near her behalf." End quote. One hundred years after this woman was murdered on our town square, a memorial for the soldiers who fought for the preservation of the practice of slavery is placed on the same grounds where this woman was murdered. This was an attempt to erase history. It was placed to erase the fact that those men did very bad things and to continue the erasure of Black stories. I can't even find this woman's name. There is no memorial to her. No one is telling her story and yet we continue to celebrate the people who committed the evils against Black Americans. If you still do not see the need for the removal of this monument, I ask you to consider that what it means to you may not be what it means to others. Please think about what it might symbolize to you if you were a Black American. You have an opportunity now to act and to demonstrate that you have a desire to bring forth positive changes for marginalized groups in our community. I will leave a copy of the petition for your review and a copy of the article I referenced which tells the stories of the woman I told you about today who was murdered on the courthouse square on the day she learned of her emancipation and had the next day of the nation, which I mentioned in my last visit. If these stories are new to you, I urge you to ponder why they are viewed and what other stories may have also been erased. I also ask you to ponder what good removing this monument will do in the efforts to tell stories that we have not yet heard or to heal our community and society wounds. I ask you to put this item on the agenda as a discussion item for your next meeting and thank you for listening.
Good morning. I am the judge and Commissioners, everybody in this courtroom. I am a sociologist, educator, resident of Walker County and also want to point out, as Phil had said, that again there are people in this town that are not honored, including my ancestor who was born a slave and died free and buried in one of the cemeteries in Huntsville, Texas. I know there's been a lot of conversation concerning the Confederacy and what they stood for. I do not want to discuss that. I actually like to discuss those Confederates themselves and the difference between ideal culture and real culture. You see, ideal culture are the things that we say we're about, the ideologies, and the real culture is what we do. Our new culture, all men are created equal. Real culture, women didn't have the right to vote. The difference between what we say and do as a society. We got the daughter of the Confederacy. Their ideal culture simply states they're here to honor their Confederate ancestors. But their real culture is much more sinister. The real culture of the daughter of the Confederacy is a pro Ku Klux Klan group. Well, what proof do you have of this crucial? Well, they have written several books, including children's books, in support of the Ku Klux Klan. Not only that, they have honored them with their fight. Secondly, their propaganda aspects included miseducating children, not just any children, but white children who they called little vultures because these are the ones who are supposed to carry out this education. As I've heard, some of these speeches and some of the things that have been said in this courtroom are guaranteed that they have accomplished parts of their mission, including things since the lost cause and including things that slaves and actors had good relationships. I agree with the slave narrative. They tell a completely different story than the words of the slaves. Third, they're not just pro-white supremacy, they are distinctly anti-black. This is a group, the daughter of the Confederacy, that even in the millennial, not in nineteen eighty-nineties, not in the nineteen hundreds, but in your time, decided to file a lawsuit so a monument for an African-American hero would not be erected. So the daughter of the Confederacy is a Ku Klux Klan group. It is a group that's aim is to miseducate and it is a group that most of the statues that were sent out was being sent out during the Civil Rights Era, so they were against American progress. Now that is their real culture and I can cite you sources on everything that I'm saying as a researcher. The question now for you as Commissioners, as Texans, is what is the difference between your culture and your real culture? What is the difference between what you say and what you actually do? It is time for Walker County to decide, is this a state? Is it a society that represents as large the Hondo population, as large as Hondo population, as large as African-American population, and as large as African-American population? Or is it a group that supports having a Ku Klux Klan-based memorial on public grounds where those people are supposed to feel that justice is blind? All right? In addition to that, my last thing that I would like, I'd add that this item should be added on the duty table. Thank you for your time.
... transcribe my recording more effectively and communicate what was said here today to those unable to attend or hear due to our observance of social distancing. If you can't find me, after my email is at madison@htxp.org. Commissioners and Judge, thank you for allowing me to address a divisive issue in our community. I will be speaking to advocate the removal of the Confederate memorial on county courthouse grounds. I would like to address those who say that removing Confederate statues and memorials erases history. There's a difference between preserving and celebrating history and there are many facets of history that do need to be remembered, but not celebrated. Germany does not celebrate the Holocaust, New Zealand does not celebrate the treatment of the Maori people, and South Africa does not celebrate the apartheid. These events are memorialized in museums, on battlefield, in cemeteries, and in books. Removing or destroying a Confederate monument does not erase history. It shows that we've learned from it and we are changing who we as a society honor. Ceasing to venerate these individuals does not bid us to forget or rewrite history. It calls us to examine it. Even if you do romanticize the idea of slavery by talking about how your family never owned slaves or how happy the slaves were with your ancestors who held them in bondage or if you like to dress up in Confederate uniforms and decry the tragedy of the lost cause, I beg of you to recognize the issues in a broader historical scope. Slavery was part of an economic system that enriched the enslavers and we live in the aftermath. No one is going to forget that our ancestors uprooted thousands of people from their homeland, carted them across the ocean and forced them and their progeny into slavery, which later became indentured servitude, which has led to the systemic socioeconomic disadvantage that has perpetuated to this day. Putting up or taking down statues is not about which version of history you want to remember. It's about who as a society, who the society as a whole wants to venerate and honor in public spaces. If you are upset about history being erased, consider that the memorial itself is part of a system that has selectively erased history to support white supremacy. In school, we learned that George Washington's dentures were made of wood, not from the teeth of slaves. We learned about Watts and L.A. riots, but not Tulsa. We learned about Black ghettos, but not Black Wall Street. And we learned about the New Deal, but not the Redlining. We learned about Tommy Smith and Jean Carlos's fists in the air during the nineteen sixty-eight Summer Olympics, but we failed to acknowledge their expulsion from the games and further ostracization from the U.S. sporting community. Black history in America has been systemically erased and forgotten and as white individuals, our privilege is having history rewritten so that we do not have to acknowledge these uncomfortable or darker acts. We fail to recognize that racism not only puts Black people at a disadvantage, but grants white people an invisible advantage. Racism is perpetuated by people who refuse to acknowledge or learn from this reality, either consciously or unconsciously. The Confederate memorial continues to loom over our Black community and the question of whether we continue to allow symbols of racism on public land must be answered. It's up to you to decide. Thank you for your time.
My name is Pilar Simmons and a year ago I returned from Germany where I spent ten months living in the small town of Lubau-Sachsen, East Germany on a Fulbright English teaching assistance scholarship. There are a few stories from my experience there that I want to share with you today. I spent a weekend in Krakow, Poland where a friend and I took a train to Auschwitz. The entire camp is considered a graveyard because on every inch of that place, an atrocity to human life was committed. I think about how our country is a graveyard. All this land that we stand on, live our lives on, belongs to indigenous Americans. Our ancestors stole this land from them, murdered them, committed genocide on them, and generations later built suburbs and malls on top of their buried bodies. Last year, in Belarus, a mass graveyard of twelve hundred Jews was discovered beneath a construction site. How many bodies are we standing on? In Krakow, in the Jewish district of Kazimirz, we came across an apartment house with a mural painted on the wall in Polish, Hebrew, and English. It said, "In memory of the Bozak family, residents of Kazimirz, sixteen thirty-three to nineteen forty-one." Three hundred years. Black Africans were brought to the Americas as slaves more than four hundred years ago and endured slavery for more than three hundred years. Since the end of the Civil War, Black Americans have endured racism and slavery by another name, Jim Crow and poor profit prisons. Walking through Berlin, walking through Berlin, among the cobblestones, I found so many brass stones, tiny memorials to Jewish and other victims of the Holocaust, telling their last voluntary residents, telling where and how they died, a personal biography of each victim. You cannot walk through Berlin without seeing a visual reminder of the life lost to racism, supremacy, and hatred. You cannot walk through Berlin without thinking about the atrocities and the work still left to do to honor those that died. Yet when I walk through Huntsville, I see no obvious references or memorials to victims of slavery, lynching, and no suggestion that legal segregation existed. Sam Houston may have died here, but his slaves Joshua and Samuel Walker Houston helped build this town, build this town's schools, and build Walker County, but you wouldn't know that from walking through this city. I have lived here nearly seven years and I shamedly admit I didn't know we had a museum for Samuel Walker until two years ago, but I saw that Confederate monument within the first weeks I moved here prominently standing across the street from an antique shop downtown, one of our town's top attractions. People see that monument more than they see Black lives and that is the entire point of why it needs to be removed. We have people here who say erasing history, we are erasing history by taking down the monuments. And I am telling you, by leaving up those monuments, it is more akin to censorship than anything else as they only tell the story written by oppressors, by slave owners, rapists, and murderers. It centers the attention on whiteness and drowns out Black voices, Black history, and Black lives. Black lives matter. I ask that you remove the monument. Thank you.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Members of the Walker County Commissioners' Court, thank you for granting me the opportunity to speak to you today. I will be brief and although I am a protester, I will not speak to you today as an academic, but rather as a mother. My son is still very young and he does not understand the debate happening in our community, but one day he will grow up and go to school. He will learn about the Atlantic slave trade, about children being torn away from their parents and shipped away in the squall of infected holds of slaver ships. He will learn about the hunger and cruelty and rape to which slaves were subjected because they were considered less than human, eventually codified as only three-fifths of a person, to be precise, as if negotiating the value of a piece of furniture rather than the worth of human life. My son will learn about the Civil War, about emancipation and Reconstruction and the Freedmen's Bank. He will then learn of the Black Codes, debt peonage, and the exploitation of Black convict labor, and he will learn about the segregation and racist policies of Jim Crow, about anti-masogination laws, about lynching, and all the dogged attempts to try to keep the Black people in an inferior and subservient position. He will learn that his only grandmother was a student during forced school integration because that's how recently it occurred in our society. My son will learn all of this because that is what teachers, and schools, and classrooms, and textbooks, and museums, and parents are for. Those are the things which teach our children the truth of history, not monuments and statues. My son will read the documents of secession passed by each state of the Confederacy. He will see the right to own other human beings as slaves articulated over and over again in those documents. He will learn that the Confederate battle flag was a visual representation of slavery and oppression and the self-perception of superiority of white Americans. He will understand that when people today cling to the symbols of the Confederate South, they are clinging to those values of racial inequality and thus he will come to understand why that flag is a painful, infuriating, and reviled symbol for so many people in our nation. My son will learn and understand all of these things as he grows and then one sunny Saturday, we will walk together on the downtown square and he might see the Confederate battle flag emblazoned on the top of the nineteen fifty's era monument, the mythical lost cause of Confederate South. He will feel sorrow, anger, confusion. He will ask me, Mom, why is this here? He will want to know why this symbol of racism is permitted to threaten and intimidate people of color in our town, on the lawn of the very home where resides the blind lady justice. And I must tell you all, I will not have an answer for him. Please help me to ensure that this future scene exists only in my imagination. I ask that the Confederate monument be made an official agenda item of the Commissioners' Court and that serious consideration be given to its relocation to private grounds or to a museum where it may be explained in its historical context rather than serving as a symbol of division on our public grounds. Please help me to ensure that my son will grow up seeing and respecting the growth and evolution of our Huntsville community towards true compassion and racial equity. Thank you.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. My name is Delia Williams. There is but one great truth. The Negro is not equal to the white man. Slavery, subordination to the superior race, is his natural and moral condition. These words were spoken by Confederate Vice President Alexander Stephens, words touted as the cornerstone of the Confederacy. This is history, the true heritage of the Confederacy. And yet, they labeled me as biased for refusing control on a false narrative, false rosy narrative of this history. Yet they had the audacity to present you, the Court, during the last hearing with seemingly reputable statements that were actually trotted in implicit bias, insufficient one-sided evidence, and abhorrent ignorance of reality and history. So today, I stand to refute these claims. Mr. Lance made blatantly ignorant statements during the last hearing stating that Confederate soldiers were not espousing white supremacy, hiding to defend slavery, and even that ninety-eight percent of Confederate soldiers did not own slaves. But noted by more than rudimentary research from S.H.S.U. history professors, maintaining slavery was a central part of the new nation as states seceded in favor of the new Confederacy. This is made abundantly clear in the eleven orphaned since where, quote, "Mississippi declared it the greatest material interest of the world. Texas vowed to maintain its existence in all future times. And Virginia's driving force for breaking away from the Union was because of the federal government's oppression of the Southern slaveholding states." And while it's true that the majority of Confederate soldiers did not own slaves, the reality, and this is a common statistical omission, was that the majority of these soldiers did not own slaves themselves because they were young and held no legal title to slaves. Rather, it was their fathers who legally owned them. But although these young soldiers were not legal slave owners, they were more likely to be connected to slaveholding households and thus had to protect their interests, human commodities. And now to the removal of the monuments. One of the biggest arguments is that it eliminates one of the best symbols we have of the past which, quote, "Reminds us all where we started, how far we have come and how much further we must go." Think about this. This statement has no basis whatsoever. It is false, holds no historical merit. We did not need a public Confederate monument to remind us of our past just as Germany did not need the Berlin Wall to stand as a reminder of the atrocities they faced. So what has truly changed? What is moving forward? How do we move forward? My final message. I stand this day once again, speaking on the issue of the Confederate monument that sits at the courthouse grounds, once again advocating for its removal, but don't get it twisted. My intention is not to beg nor force any one of you to take action. Instead, I'm petitioning that you take this issue seriously. Think of the grander message you are sending to this nation. It would behoove us. Think of the grander message that you are sending to this nation over a monument that promotes a warped version of history when other cities and states are taking action. My hometown of Beaumont, Texas, they recently had their Confederate monument removed through the assistance of research provided from Sam Houston history professors. And if lawmakers in the historically deep South Mississippi can come together and remove the Confederate emblem from their state's flag and were arguing over a monument, if they can recognize that they're not imagining the horrific parades for
...had endured racism and slavery by another name, Jim Crow in four profit prisons. Walking through Berlin, walking through Berlin, among the cobblestones, I found so many brass stones, tiny memorials to Jewish and other victims of the Holocaust. Telling their last voluntary residents, telling where and how they died, a personal biography of each victim. You cannot walk through Berlin without seeing a visual reminder of a life lost to racism, supremacy, and hatred. You cannot walk through Berlin without thinking about the atrocities and the work still left to do to honor those that died. Yet, when I walk through Huntsville, I see no obvious references or memorials to victims of slavery, lynching, and no suggestion that legal segregation existed. Sam Houston may have died here, but his slaves Joshua and Sam Walker Houston helped build this town, built this town's schools, and built Walker County. But you wouldn't know that from walking through this city. I have lived here nearly seven years, and I shamedly admit, I didn't know we had a museum for Samuel Walker until two years ago. But I saw that Confederate monument within the first weeks I moved here, prominently standing across the street from an antique shop downtown, one of our town's top attractions. People see that monument more than they see Black Lives, and that is the entire point of why it needs to be removed. We have people here who say, erasing history, we are erasing history by taking down the monuments. And I am telling you, by leaving up those monuments, it is more akin to censorship than anything else, as they only tell the story written by oppressors, by slave owners, rapists, and murderers. It centers the attention on whiteness and drown out Black voices, Black history, and Black lives. Black Lives Matter, I ask that you remove the monument, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you hear me? Members of the Walbert County Commissioner's Court, thank you for granting me the opportunity to speak to you today. I will be brief, and although I am a protester, I will not speak to you today as an academic, but rather as a mother. My son is still very young, and he does not understand the debate happening in our community. But one day, he will grow up and go to school. He will learn about the Atlantic slave trade, about children being torn away from their parents and shipped away in the squall of infected holes of slaver ships. He will learn about the hunger and cruelty and rape to which slaves were subjected, because they were considered less than human, eventually codified as only three-fifths of a person, to be precise, as if negotiating the value of a piece of furniture rather than the worth of a human life. My son will learn about the Civil War, about emancipation and Reconstruction and the Freedmen's Bank. He will then learn of the Black Codes, debt peonage, and the exploitation of Black convict labor. And he will learn about the segregation and racist policies of Jim Crow, about anti-masochination laws, about lynching, and all the dogged attempts to try to keep the Black people in an inferior and subservient position. He will learn that his only grandmother was a student during forced school integration, because that's how recently it occurred in our society. My son will learn all of this, because that is what teachers, and schools, and classrooms, and textbooks, and museums, and parents are for. Those are the things which teach our children the truth of history, not monuments and statues. My son will read the documents of succession passed by each state of the Confederacy. He will see the right to own other human beings as slaves articulated over and over again in those documents. He will learn that the Confederate battle flag was a visual representation of slavery and oppression, and the self-perception of superiority of white Americans. He will understand that when people today cling to the symbols of the Confederate South, they are clinging to those values of racial inequality. And thus, he will come to understand why that flag is a painful, infuriating, and reviled symbol for so many people in our nation. My son will learn and understand all of these things as he grows. And then, one sunny Saturday, we will walk together on the downtown square, and he might see the Confederate battle flag emblazoned atop the 1950s era monument to the mythical lost cause of Confederate South. He will feel sorrow, anger, confusion. He will ask the mom, why is this here? He will want to know why this symbol of racism is permitted to threaten and intimidate people of color in our town, on the lawn of the very home where resides the blind lady justice. And I must tell you all, I will not have an answer for him. Please help me to ensure that this future scene exists only in my imagination. I ask that the Confederate monument be made an official agenda item of the Commissioner's Court, and that serious consideration be given to its relocation to private grounds or to a museum where it may be explained in its historical context, rather than serving as a symbol of division on our public grounds. Please help me to ensure that my son will grow up seeing and respecting the growth and evolution of our Huntsville community towards true compassion and racial equity. Thank you.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioner. My name is Neil Williams. There is but one great truth: The Negro is not equal to the white man. Slavery, subordination to the superior race, is his natural and moral condition. These words were spoken by Confederate Vice President Alexander Stephens, words touted as the cornerstone of the Confederacy. This is history, the true heritage of the Confederacy. And yet, they labeled me as biased for refusing control on a false narrative, false rosy narrative of this history. Yet, they had the audacity to present you, the court, during the last hearing with seemingly reputable statements that were actually trampled in implicit bias, insufficient one-sided evidence, and abhorrent ignorance of reality and history. So today, I stand to refute these claims. Mr. Lance made blatantly ignorant statements during the last hearing, stating that Confederate soldiers were not espousing white supremacy, hiding to defend slavery, and even that ninety-eight percent of Confederate soldiers did not own slaves. But noted by more than rudimentary research from SHSBU history professors, maintaining slavery was a central part of the new nation as states seceded in favor of the new Confederacy. This is made abundantly clear in the eleven orphaned cities where, quote, "Mississippi declared it the greatest material interest of the world." Texas vowed to maintain its existence in all future times. And Virginia driving force for breaking away from the Union was because of the federal government's oppression of the Southern slave-owned states. And while it's true that the majority of Confederate soldiers did not own slaves, the reality, and this is a common statistical omission, was that the majority of these soldiers did not own slaves themselves because they were young and held no legal title to slaves. Rather, it was their fathers who legally owned them. But although these young soldiers were not legal slave owners, they were more likely to be connected to slave-owned households and thus had to protect their interests, human commodities. And now, to the removal of the monuments. One of the biggest arguments is that it eliminates one of the best symbols we have of the past, which, quote, "Reminds us all where we started, how far we have come, and how much further we must go." Think about this. This statement has no basis whatsoever. It is false, holds no historical merit. We did not need a public Confederate monument to remind us of our past, just as Germany did not need the Berlin Wall to stand as a reminder of the atrocities they faced. So what has truly changed? What is moving forward? How do we move forward? My final message. I stand this day once again, speaking on the issue of the Confederate monument that sits at the courthouse grounds, once again advocating for its removal. But don't get it twisted. My intention is not to beg nor force any one of you to take action. Instead, I'm petitioning that you take this issue seriously. Think of the grander message you are sending to this nation. It would behoove us. Think of the grander message that you are sending to this nation over a monument that promotes a warped version of history, when other cities at stake are taking action. My hometown of Beaumont, Texas, they recently had their Confederate monument removed through the assistance of research provided from Sam Houston history professors. And if lawmakers in the historically deep South Mississippi can come together and remove the Confederate emblem from their state's flag and were arguing over a monument. If they can recognize that they're not imagining their heritage, because we're Americans, not Confederates. And if they can recognize that they're fulfilling their heritage and their founding American values. If Mississippi can do this with their flag and we cannot with one monument, Huntsville, we have problems. Thank you.
...for what I'm going to say. Because what I'm going to tell you is a real experience from Friday, June twenty-sixth, right here in Huntsville, Texas. I wrestled with the idea of the Confederacy as my heritage, not hate. Simply heritage. On Friday, June twenty-sixth, I attended a peaceful protest in front of the Walker County Courthouse, as we do every Friday. And a man comes up in a truck, he gets out of his truck, and he goes to this Confederate monument. He gets on his knees, and he prays to the monument. He gets up, he walks past me, and he says a few negative things about the signs we have. I don't have a problem with that. And then he says, "You will never get this monument removed, because this is the South." He said, "The South will rise again. You will never get this monument removed." And I said, "Sir, it's not about..." I said to the whole commission of people who actually are the ones that get this removed, it's not about you and me right now. And he said, "No, this is the South. That monument will always stay." And so, I let him say that, and he walked past me, and he started yelling, and he put me off a few times. Okay. Gets in his truck and leaves. He comes back. He gets in his truck, he stops at a stoplight, and he proceeds to start yelling at us. I ignored him, because I always take the moral high run, and I'm not going to act ignorant with someone who's ignorant. And then, and I apologize for telling you all this in full detail. This is what grabbed my attention. He says, "Fuck Black people, fuck y'all, fuck MLK, take down every MLK statue, white lives matter." That grabbed my attention. I turned around, and I said a few things back there, trying to get him to leave. He then reached right above his head, where your rearview mirror is in the trunk, and he grabbed a small club. I'm from Beaumont, Texas, near Jasper and Viator. Where I come from, that small club that's either kept either on the driver's side or above your mirror is known as a nigger view, solely for the purpose of beating niggers. He pulls that out, and he sticks it out his window, and he says, "Come here, come take this beating over a monument." None of us challenges beliefs over a monument. He sticks this out here, and I'm looking him in the eyes, and I'm thinking, "It's about heritage, not hate. It's about heritage, not hate." And I'm looking at him as he's holding this nigger view, and I say a few things to get him to leave, and he speeds off. I drive home that night, and I'm thinking, "It's about heritage, not hate. It's about heritage, not hate." I go to the police station a few days ago to file a report, because I have to, because everyone out there, their lives were all in danger. And I'm at the police station thinking, "It's about heritage, not hate." I go home, and I'm thinking, "It's about heritage, not hate." I go to a protest the next week, and as he's circling the courthouse as if he's a shark, and we are his prey, I'm thinking, "It's about heritage, not hate." And as he circles us with a six-pound flipping of softest meat, and we call the police out, and he's gone by the time they get there, I think, "Wait a minute. His heritage is hate. And this is why I am strongly in support of the removal of the Confederate monument from the courthouse ground. It simply cannot stand." And I thank God for letting me speak, and I hope and pray that you guys put this on the agenda, because this is way more serious than y'all think. Thank you.
My name is Joshua Dale Wolsey. Members of the council. My introduction. Zipper Fidelis, translated in Latin as Always Faithful, is also the motto of the United States Marine Corps. A father was such, and many friends alike, first to fight, first to the call to action, and many others who served in their respectable branches of service, patriots, fighters for freedom, heroes. We welcome them as such. Honor our heroes, not traitors. I stand before you today because of my conscience, that my love for my friends would not allow me to remain silent and appease the opposition on the removal of this Confederate monument that taints the legacy of our county. I speak up on behalf of my love for a man that has taught me a lot about life and its challenges, through discrimination and hopes for a better future. A man who has instilled values about being a man myself, a brother, a son at times, and teaching me not to look past color, but to acknowledge its fullness, embracing its distinction with no further division. He and Black men like him are torn down as long as that idol stands. His name is Will Hightower, a Marine and sailor of a combined twenty-three years of service, a man of many accommodations so well-deserved, as well as the rank of Staff Sergeant, a Fort Recon Marine of the Second Division, who has seen the world in all its beauty and its tragic order. This is one of my friends that I mentioned to you. He is a hero, but there is no monument to honor him and many brave men and women like him. But there is a monument out there that disrespects him, that dismisses the worth of him and his ancestors, that dredges up false history to mislead good people, and diminishes the credibility of this gallant that stands silent. I say this because its presence is a mockery of the justice that this place is supposed to represent and uphold. Where is justice in upkeeping a monument that doesn't tell the whole story of the war with honesty nor integrity? It wasn't placed there for the benefit of the whole community at a time that arguably was meant as a provocation, and today only stands as a reminder of the failure of this county, and standing toe-to-toe with its Black citizenry. Social relations based on knowledge and understanding is how we overcome falsehood that guides us towards atrocity. It is how I grew past hatred and misunderstanding. It is because of great men like Will Hightower, whose sacrifices for this nation and community are worth so much more than the cause that stone is trying to celebrate. As long as you don't honor him, or soldiers fighting in Iraq, Afghanistan, Vietnam, Korea, Europe, and elsewhere, are men and women of color integrate within our fighting forces, what right do we have to use this public space to honor instead traitors and human traffickers of our fellow man? We need you to stand up for our brothers and sisters, our fellow citizens of Walker County and countrymen, and see how we can better serve them than this monument. We can work together in building better opportunities for our children. We can provide better opportunities for our citizens across all spectrums of color. We can look into ways to uphold and honor the Black community and its history, and through this, right our wrongs that our previous system has done towards our fellow men and women of color. We have not waited and persevered so long for this community to skip the needed conversation on this subject of racism, and how it's imbued itself inside our system. We must confess with our hogs in our mouth that this monument and treatment of the Black community is wrong. We have the power to change this, to do something instead of sit idly while our county is amiss, or rather, our country amiss civil unrest. We can show them that we value them equally by respecting their dignity and memory of their ancestors by pulling this monstrosity down. Through this action, we can move forward hand in hand. It will not be easy. Good deeds are never easy as we struggle with our own humanity. Ways harder than such is living in a community feeling mocked, unloved, discarded, and disrespected by your own government. There are steps we must take towards fixing ourselves from this harm. Now let us not misconstrue history and disrespect our fellow man. Tear this monument down.
George Floyd's death, and my neighbor's day on Wednesday. George Floyd's death was horrible. Slavery is horrible. It always has been. It's a part of our humanity, equals man, thousands and thousands of years. The Romans enslaved equals of all colors. They were non-discriminatory. The Vikings were the same. They enslaved assassins, the Germans, the English, the British, whatever. They were non-discriminatory. The North, the Barbary Coast, North Africans, Black Africans enslaved one and a half million whites. It was the Zulu blacks that captured the Black slaves in Africa and took them to the slave traders on the coast because the whites could not go into Africa because we were not a minority. Slavery is horrible. It's been around for thousands of years. And what gets, what concerns me the most, commissioners and judges, is a monument. We're worried about a monument. Black Lives Matter. How many Blacks were murdered by Blacks who followed the riot in the city of the Civil Unrest? Nineteen among a Chicago, a St. Louis police officer was murdered trying to defend a store in Black Lives Matter, and they're killing these people. How many Blacks died in Chicago over the week two forty-seven? How many have died in New York? Over four hundred. And we're worried about a monument? I say that we let the monument be stamped with the simple fact that history repeats itself over and over. And that monument needs to be stamped with the fact that people have forgotten the history. In the eyes of Martin Luther, all men are sinners in the eyes of God. And if we fail to remember our history, we will never save us. I say what I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, commissions, for this opportunity. Thank you, and people of Walbert County. You came here to give this input. I would echo Dave's historical perspective. I am by birth Norwegian. My ancestors, ancestors, the Vikings, took slaves. The slaves they took from Poland and Russia were Slavic people, and that's where the word slave comes from. They took Slavs, and they made slaves of them. Norwegians today consider slavery the heinous institution, a despicable institution. We all, I'm sure every person in this room agrees with that. We do not oppose slavery. The Norwegians and Germans who were in Texas, some of them were pressed into the Confederate Army, they were not in agreement with the practice of owning other people. So if this monument is removed, what is next? Are they going to call for the removal of St. Houston's statue? St. Houston had a young man who came to him with Margaret Lee, his third wife. This young man worked for St. Houston, same with Joshua Houston. He's a Black slave from Alabama. St. Houston taught him to read and write, taught him about the law. After the war, Joshua Houston became a prominent member of a leadership of Huntsville. He served in the city council, and up until eighteen ninety, he was very active in civic affairs. My suggestion is rather than tear down this monument, which would be a step of erasing history, which we should not do. History has been erased in the past. In China, the emperor in two thousand, two hundred B.C. ordered all the books burned so they could rewrite the history and show the current rulers being favorable. The Muslims burned the library in Alexandria in the eighth century, destroying three thousand years of literature, a fave in the Greek that wasn't the holy word in God to them. So my suggestion is, rather than tear down this monument, let's build monument to other prominent people here. Let's put up a monument for Joshua Houston, or for Will Hightower. Would that make sense? It would make sense to honor everyone, because we are all here to live together. I saw a day in June in nineteen seventy-two in New Orleans, spewed hate about Black people. It turned my stomach. I don't agree with that. So... We've also seen statues of Teddy Roosevelt and Abraham Lincoln removed, defaced. They defaced, they want to remove the statue of the great emancipator? That doesn't make sense to me. So... Judge, I would recommend that we keep that monument, and we have some citizens' group, raise money, to build further monuments honoring all the people of Walbert County and our own great state of Texas. One more thing is that the whole history of Jim Crow was conducted by Democrat politicians. Andrew Jackson founded the Democrat Party, a slave holder. The Democrats controlled the South. When they took over the South after Reconstruction, they began passing Jim Crow laws. That was a bad time. That was a heinous thing to do. And today, the Democrat Party appears to me to want to hold the Black people still in their clutches as a Democrat plantation. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Detective Commissioners. So I am a historic, uh, seated in the head, say, with a big voice person. And so I'll start briefly, just by addressing the comments from the last two speakers. First off, I would say, you need to be very careful about saying it repeats itself. It doesn't repeat itself, but it often rhymes, we find, the patterns that we often find in it. Additionally speaking, the slavery that existed in the Antioch South from the time of the founding until eighteen sixty, a change even during that time is unlike any other system that ever existed in human history. Because of conscious choices that were made here to take it from being part of this broad and very complicated universe of free labor that caught all different kinds of people within its bounds, during the colonial period, slavery was kind of sort of passed along hereditarily, or wasn't necessarily racially defined, but by the time it is eighteen sixty, it became, it became hereditary, it became, uh, racial. Additionally, I just want to say that the frame of removing the monument, the note cast that is put on the agenda for the next meeting, I want to put it this, it's less about trying to find or blame or indictment in the past than it is about making about a decision about our Walker County's present and its future. And this is where I want to get back to the point where history rhymes. History is rhyming right now. We find ourselves actually in a moment in history that isn't all that different from the moment when that stone buried first went up. The winds of change were sort of sweeping around through the country. Now, in nineteen fifty-six, the officials of this county, in this town, had to be dragged, kicking, and screaming into, accepting the change that was coming, the desegregation of schools, the desegregation of public accommodations, so on and so forth. And this is why I say history rhymes and does not repeat itself. I do not believe Walker County in twenty twenty is Walker County in nineteen fifty-six. I do not believe our public officials, like you would have met in front of us, had to be dragged, kicking, and screaming. I believe, in fact, you spent the last two meetings listening to your constituents, which is something the officials didn't do in nineteen fifty-six. And I'll just kind of close by saying that, you know, towns only get one chance, I'm making a first impression. When I first moved here, take up a job, become part of this town, you know, middle class, become part of this town, and contributing citizenry. The first plaything I saw with that monument is I moved and put a part across Eleventh Street, up above those, up above those antique shelves. It's not inherently the way it was being pressured, the first movement of the town to see that. And I think that we can think of something better, something better for the residents of this town, something that better represents what this town's actual history and the actual residents actually are, and something that also affirms values that I believe we already have in this county, which is that although that monument belies it, when you step through the doors of the Walker County Courthouse, I do believe that the Fourteenth Amendment the doors of the Walker County Courthouse, I do believe that the Fourteenth Amendment matters inside. And I think the men who do their jobs inside that building think the Fourteenth Amendment. And so, I think we have a chance here to bring Walkers County into our public spaces in some manner of consistency. Thank you for all the information.
All who think so. A monument is not, in my view, therefore, a marker of history. If it were, it would have to say something like, "This plaque or this stone commemorates the outrage against desegregation that prompted Walker County in 1956 to restate its alignment with the Confederacy." A monument, by contrast, like the adjective monumental suggests, is not a testament to historical fact, but to those most important values we hope, as a community, will continue to speak on our behalf long after we are gone. Again, a monument is not a statement of the past. It is a promise to the future. The onus is on us, therefore, the residents and government officials of Huntsville, to ask ourselves, and of Walker County more broadly, to ask ourselves, if a monument performs this crucial function of testifying through time to our core values, what does this monument say on our behalf? At best, it says we are insensitive to the continual devaluation of black life in Walker County. And at worst, it says that what we value and will continue to value so long as the monument stands is white supremacy and the anti-black violence it entails. In closing, I urge you to recognize that while not unrelated to history, a monument is not a marker of history, but a testimony to value. As a community with an eye to our diversity and to our promise for the future, we cannot stand for the values that this monument represents. We must tear it down. Thank you.
What is this stone that's out there on our courthouse lawn? What is this bloody, open injury of injustice that's still down? We said pursuit of happiness, let's call children from their parents, husbands from their wives. We claim all men are equal. Why don't we value black life in Huntsville? They are our neighbors, our countrymen, our humans. They are us. The monument stands for shackles, for beatings, whips, and rapes, for forced experiments, surgeries, and murders. Confederates betrayed this country, the United States of America. They fought to treat people as property, as something less than human. They do not deserve our honor out there on that courthouse lawn. Please, add this to the next agenda and take that statue down. Thank you.